To call this regular meeting to order, Caldwell.
Mayor Querom.
Here.
Councilmember Swanson, councilmember Mavory.
Here.
Councilmember Gomez, councilmember Newlin.
Here. Please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With any further comment tonight. Okay, so we'll go to, we have a couple gentlemen tonight from the Princeton Rotary, and I'd like to invite you up to the, to the mic. You just need to make sure the mic is on, Steve, just, there's a switch there.
Slide it towards you on top there.
And we need, there we go. And then we need each of you to state your name.
My name is Steve Ausland.
Michael Stotsky.
Thanks for, thanks for having us tonight. We're here on behalf of the Princeton Rotary Club. As you probably know, maybe, that Princeton Rotary Club is celebrating its 100th anniversary this year, which is a big deal. We thank for a community organization to survive that long. We were founded back in 1920. Starting last year, the club went through a process, we wanted to do something, several things actually, for the community that marked this anniversary. And one of the things we wanted to do was find a significant project that we could do and fund that would enhance the community and provide an opportunity for the club to provide future efforts and funding to do other projects. And we looked at probably, I don't know, six or seven different projects, and Michael came up with the idea of doing this sign at what is now Darius Miller Park. So, we did a design and we took it back to the club, the club has approved it, and we met with Joel and Teresa a couple times. They've been very supportive of this project. So what we want to do, Michael's going to take you through the sign itself and why it looks the way it is and where it's going to be, we don't know how the final spot of where it's going to be located yet, depending upon final approval of the city, but he's going to take that, you through that part of the process.
Thank you, good evening. We feel this is really very special. When you come across the railroad tracks where we have the tree that's decorated at Christmas, this is where the, the new sign will go. Obviously, correct placement by way of the city officials. What's neat about this sign is that it's made out of the bricks that came out of Euclid, and that was an idea that was shared with us by the mayor, and, you know, what better way to keep the history of Princeton incorporated into this sign? The work is being done by local business, businessmen. Princeton Graphics is doing the sign, which will be lit at night, which will make for a very nice presentation when you come across the tracks. Everything will be internal, so there'll be nothing that can be run over by a lawnmower or kicked, vandalized, everything internal, which is very nice. The work is going to be completed by Dennis Erickson of Erickson Brick Masonry here in town. The actual design that we first brought forth, young lady and a young man that are graduates of Princeton High School, they came up with that, which I think is nice, a nice connection. We think that it will not only enhance the park, but at the same time, a welcoming unit, if you will, when folks come to our community. The other thing that I think is quite nice is that it's really a double celebration of Darius Miller. You may recall that years ago on the stone that's in the park, there's a plaque for Darius Miller. We opted not to try to extract that from the, from the stone there and mount it, so we have something that recognizes Darius Miller front and center, which is really, when you think about it, we really never had anything like that. You have to be walking the park to see the marker for Darius Miller. Then the other plaque is the Rotary Club's four-way test and the artwork for our 100th anniversary. And I believe that when all is said and done, everyone will be very happy with it, and certainly on behalf of our Rotary Club, we're very proud to, to be working with the city to, to bring this to the community in general.
I think the other thing that's an important part to consider also is the fact that the club is going to continue to put resources into the maintenance of the park. We're all, the club is already starting to budget money for the caboose. As you may know, we've done a lot of things down at Soldiers and Sailors as far as cleaning it on a regular basis, and we're going to be doing some of that this spring, but once this gets up, our efforts are going to shift down to this park, to what will be Rotary Park. I think the historic commission did some research on the deed, and they told us that the deed was given to the city by the railroad, and it had to remain a park or there had to be deeded back to the railroad. So that's, you know, we want to help the city maintain this as a park, and we want to give recognition to both Rotary, but also to Darius Miller.
Yeah, I think it's just, I think it's a wonderful project. I think it's going to be, it's going to enhance that area, that sign, it's going to be a beautiful sign. I know that, you know, the maintenance of the park, I mean, the city will continue to mow it, but the maintenance of other items, you have to look into.
Yeah, cleaning it, every, you know, raking leaves in spring and so on and so forth.
And then you mentioned the caboose, so the future plan on the caboose is to repair and repaint.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, it's just a.
We don't have a timeframe on that, but as, as funding becomes available.
Yeah, I just think it's a, it's a great, a great project, and appreciate the idea and coming up with the, with the drawing and everything, so it's all been done by on the Rotary's part.
Right, right.
Thank you.
You bet.
So next, we have a, Chamblin Associates are here tonight to give a presentation on city infrastructure projects that we've been working on recently, so I need for you to come up to the mic, state your names for the record, because you're being recorded, and take your leave.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Dean Chalky with Chamblin. This is Don Bisby with Chamblin, who is our chief water, wastewater engineer. And Mayor Querom asked us to come tonight to talk about some of the projects that we've been working on and also some of the ones that are earmarked for the future. For the last several years, we've been working on a long-term control plan, which has brought to light some of the troubled areas in the city, and the city's been proactive in fixing those problems. Over the last several years, we've completed a few projects that have combined replacement of about two miles of storm and sanitary sewer, and we've got another combined mile or so of storm and sanitary sewer to be yet replaced. One of the topics that we're going to talk about tonight is a program that the city of Peru actually implemented and has had success with, and it's a sewer ejector incentive program, which Don will get into shortly, and then it'll also, also give the opportunity for the council to look through the packet that we handed out, if there's any questions and answers, you know, do a little question and answer session on projects that have been completed and some of the ones that we have earmarked here for the future. So, with that, Don, if you want to talk about the, first, we can talk about the sewer ejector incentive program. And what this is, is why the city is, is planning and implementing some of these larger projects, which half a million to a million dollar cost. There's a program that the city of Peru put together that was really helpful with the citizens to prevent basement flooding, which, again, why, why the city's waiting to tackle some of the larger projects, this has been successful in Peru, so.
Do I need to say it to Mike? Can I come over here?
No, you're not, no.
Wow. Okay, and I know it's hard for you guys to see back here, I guess first of all, you, I think you've all seen this drawing before. When we started really intensely studying the, the whole problem with sewer backups and flows in the city of Princeton, we found immediately, the entire, this entire north area, blue area, all these sewers all come together and they meet right here ahead of the waste treatment plant. This entire area in the purple also, they all come together and they meet right here at the treatment plant. All these areas in the yellow all come together and meet there. So at one point, you could look in three different directions and say, where's all the water coming from? And as you can see here on a particular storm event back in 2017, from the north, we picked up an extra 135,000 gallons, from the south, we picked up an extra 180,000, and from this way, we came 3 million. So what that helped us to do is to say, okay, there may be problems up here eventually we want to deal with, there may be problems down here eventually we want to deal with, but the real problem is obviously coming from here, and allowed us to focus. Tim and his guys have been putting the flow meters in different places all through the city, and so we've tried to identify where problems are, but the, where we lead over to here is, of course, no matter what you do, if you're talking about putting in sewers down streets, as soon as we start talking, we're into millions of dollars, right? It just, that's the way it is. And, and the, the real problem, if we can say it this way, for you as a community, the real problem with these high flows is that they back up in people's basements. And we don't like that they back up at all, but it's when they show up in somebody's basement that, as a city, we have a real problem. So what, what Peru did, and we wanted to show you, was they basically said, well, let's actually tackle the problem itself, which is right at the house. And basically, if you think about a, a normal house, if you can follow me here, if you've got a, a basement drain in the floor, basically, it's draining, everything's draining, it comes out and it drops in the sewer, and everything's wonderful. If, if the sewer itself backs up, you can see, I mean, water seeks its own level, is that sewer's backing up, the level is rising, and it's going to rise right into the basement. I mean, it's a very logical kind of a thing. So as long as that pipe is directly connected to that sewer, you're always running the risk that as soon as some, as it backs up, for whatever reason, it's going to be in the basement. So to have that situation in the basement floor, a resident is vulnerable sooner or later, one way or another, whether it's stormy events or it's just a simple sewer backup and end up in their basement. A way to correct that is to come back here and say, okay, let's do this. Let's catch all of our sewage from the house, drop it into a sump, pump it up into the sewer piping in our basement, which then drops down and goes out. Now this sewer can back up, and all it does is rise in this pipe, but now we, we cut off that direct connection back into the basement. We've essentially cut off that hydraulic connection between the people's basement and the sewer. So, and frankly, as, as I look at this, we purchased a house over in Peru here about eight years ago when we moved here, and one of the first things I noticed was it had a basement floor drain. One of the first things I thought was, that's not good. And then 2013 came along, and I really thought that's not good, because we got sewage in our basement. And so, of course, I, I can do it myself, a lot of us can, but I, this is exactly what I did. I said, I'm not going to have a direct connection from sanitary sewer into my basement, and so I did this. The, the, it can cost 5,000 to 7,500 if you simply hire a plumber to do something like this. So what, what, and now the other side of that, though, is, again, the alternative is to spend millions of dollars putting in enough sewers to prevent this from happening. If this person can spend something like just a few thousand dollars, and as far as they're concerned, it solves the problem, in, in an entire community, we can spend way less than the millions and millions. If you're following me? So what, again, what Peru looked at, and I think any community logically looked at it, said, you know, if we could encourage our residents to do this, to the point where the sewer backing up isn't this problem, then in a sense, we've solved the problem. Right? And so they went into a particular area that, that was notorious for backups, very, very bad area, and what they did, and I think it explains it over here, they offered to vouchers to the citizens, and in their case, they said, we'll pay 50% of whatever it costs to do this in your house up to $3,500. Not that anybody else would have to do those numbers exactly, but that's the kind of idea. We'll share that with you, we'll give you an incentive, and basically what, what they accomplished was, now, that entire area, there is no problem, and we all know the sewer's still backing up, but if it doesn't back up in anybody's basement, then it, it has become another problem. Later on, maybe the EPA doesn't like it, maybe we have other reasons why we want to deal with it, but at least as far as the residents, the homeowners are concerned, they don't have a problem anymore. And so as you guys look at, at your community, excuse me, you know, and you look at this whole area and say, oh my goodness, I mean, how many hundred millions of dollars are we going to have to spend to fix all of these problems? It's like, well, actually, if we could come up with a program to offer our citizens the opportunity to fix it in sense themselves, we can spend a lot less money and still solve the problem of sewers backing up in people's basements.
It, it allows you to do the, the larger projects on a feasible timeline.
Right.
It's what it allows you to do.
It buys us time.
It buys you time. And like, like Don was saying, it, it's a, in the resident's eyes, it's a problem when it's coming up in their basement, and certainly when it's contained within the plumbing of the home, out of sight, out of mind, it buys you that time.
How long has this program been going in Peru?
Five years?
Yeah, I would say about five years. And the particular area that Don mentioned, they've had about a dozen residents so far, and the city spent about 55,000 so far in incentives, and they had about a dozen residents take advantage of that program.
You know, and it's a voluntary program, you know, and it's, you know, whether they want to do it or not, I mean, it's, it's, it's up to them, it's up to residents that have, that deal with the issue. So, yeah, I think it's a, I think it's a good idea.
Okay. And it's really something that you as a community could say, yeah, we want to do something like this. We've talked about, you know, you could say, well, how much money is it going to cost us per year? Well, you could set a budget, say, this is the budget, first come, first served, you know, come and apply, and this is how much we'll do this year, we'll try to have the program again next year, and again, urge people to, to do that. I did want to show you one other possible project, and this is back more to doing sewer Down in, let's see, where we, down in this area, we've got Thompson Street down by the, down below the hospitals, Thompson and Fifth, where we are in the hospitals right in here. And what we found, Tim's guys found with their flow studies, is, I mean, we're getting an enormous amount of water into the storm sewer, and, or the sanitary sewer, and it just seems to be coming from everywhere. And what's happening is, it comes down Thompson, and the sewer now turns north, comes up to Fifth Street, comes over to the lift station, and then from there, we either pump on into the sewer system, or we, you had recently installed a line south to this lagoon. And what's happening is, the, all of this rainwater and stuff that's sometimes getting into the storm sewer is basically hitting this corner and backing up, and it's got to get around this corner, and then it's hitting the, rainwater is coming from this direction and it can barely get over, and what's happening in it is, this whole area is just backing up and causing all kinds of problems. And what we're looking at is a very simple fix, could be to run a relief sewer from that corner over to the line going out to the lagoon, so that, for instance, you might have a curb or some apparatus in there, so that normally the sewage does this thing, goes up north, goes where it's supposed to. When it starts getting high, it goes over, runs over here, it was right straight out to the lagoon. Right now, in order to get to the lagoon, it has to get around the corner, up here, over here, into the lift station, then go to the lagoon, and in the process, in the meantime, what it's doing is backing up everybody's basements. So I, I think we're looking at, what, about a $600,000 project, we're thinking? I mean, just for the sewers, that we could immediately, we think, bring water relief to this area by putting in a sewer like that and allowing that to happen. So that, that would be a project that, you know, we could do, that could, I wouldn't, I wouldn't tell citizens, look, if we just do that, then you won't have a problem anymore. I still think this, this other is a good idea for anybody, but at least we, we would be bringing the whole flooding situation down, getting it out to the lagoon where it belongs, get it out there quickly instead of backing it up here and, you know, into people's basements. So we wanted to show that to you.
Yeah, you know, last September, we had a, a lot of rain, and I was down there at that manhole at Fifth Street, and we popped the manhole cover, and the water was all the way up, almost to street level, because it was trying to make that turn, and, and it couldn't make the turn. Well, again, it was backing up, and people got back up during that storm. And I've come down Thompson Street from, I think, Euclid East in storms past, and I've seen water actually coming up through the manholes in the middle of the street because that water had backed up, and, you know, it was just, it was all, it was all, you know, I mean, that's, that's what's happening there. I think it's, it's, it's pretty obvious.
Yeah.
I mean, you had the idea, was this going to impact like 10 square blocks of residents or more, or?
Well, you've got a sewer that's coming back here, coming up here, down here, back here, clear the, clear the courthouse.
So everything that's going, going eastbound on Thompson Street with that relief would relieve the people at the, at the park as well?
Yeah, yeah.
Is it unusual to have a 90-degree turn at Thompson and Fifth? Is that something that just was done and maybe no one thought about it, or it, it worked for years and years, but no more?
It probably never did work, but, but seriously, the, I think what nobody thought of is how much volume we were going to try to get around that corner. If we had a nor, even remotely normal flow coming down that sewer, it's fine, that's what their, that's what manholes are designed for, they turn it. It's just, we're just so overwhelming, the system, that, that it's not able to.
Yeah, and our storm events have increased over the years too.
Yeah, intensity.
You always heard 100-year storm or having one of those by 30 years it seems like. So that, that's one of the other issues that brings these problems to light is just the storm events themselves that we're having.
And that, that manhole at Fifth Street, I mean, first of all, what's the diameter of the sewer that goes north from there? I mean, how, how, what's the diameter that that water is?
15-inch?
No.
You wear that?
No, it's only a, a tad.
10-inch.
And it's, and it's, it's, it's way down, I mean, so, you know, it's trying to make that turn, and it, and all this water, I mean, it's what, that, that comes up to street level? What's the distance between that sewer going to the north at street level there? I mean, it's?
Starts probably six foot, and by the time you get to the hospital, hospital's pretty deep, probably eight, at least eight foot in the ground, not more.
But the, the 10-inch is probably there, I mean, nobody would put in a 10-inch sewer.
What would you propose for this new addition size-wise?
Like 24, and part, part of the logic of that is that with, that's a 24 going out to the lagoon, I mean, might as well get it over and get it out of here.
And that would connect with the line that goes out to that pond, would it be, would you drop down into it, or would it be like a side connection, and would be, or would you drop down into the line that runs out to the pond?
You place a structure there and, and put a new structure there and tie it all in together. But I would, but I think what you're thinking of, and I would, I would start that sewer deeper, so we're dropping into it, so, I mean, it's not, there's no sense at all that it's backing up, and when I got out there, I would prefer to design the sewer dropped into the line going out there, same thing. I mean, everywhere you go, we're pulling down the level, pull it down, pull it down, keep it down, and keep it out of people's basements.
I have a couple of quick questions. Is it, is it Don?
Yes, it is.
Don, you're fine, problem. So Don, you know, first off, I think the city's heading in the right direction. We, for a time, we were using quite a few different engineering firms to do our work, and I think that it's hard to have accountability when you've got one company working on one part of town, one company on another, and so I'm glad we have one company, and that puts the burden on you folks in many ways, but also we have accountability in both directions. So we, a couple things on back, backing up. Our, so in 2019, we had two significant rain events that created flooding, both in the spring and then the fall in Princeton, and we saw flooding in areas that we'd never seen before, and I'm going to come back to that in just a second. First off, did you, were you on board, your company Chamblin Engineering, the overflow lagoon? Who engineered that, say, 15 years ago? That, that's your project?
Yeah, yup.
Okay, so you have ownership on that, which is fine. The past two main rain events, my understanding was that lagoon filled up to capacity, is that right, Tim?
Um, it wasn't at complete capacity, it was up quite, quite a bit, probably just over three-quarters full.
So we still had some capacity, we could have put more out there. So I don't know why we didn't kick more out there, I don't know, is there a reason, a simple reason, Frank, to explain that, just in layman's terms?
With the overflow, there's only so much that can go out there.
So we were?
We're not pumping it, it's just, it's just gravity out there.
Right, it's gravity out, and we pump it back when we have time to treat it. So basically, you're saying it was basically full? Oh, oh, that's capacity, or not to capacity?
No, it was not, it just, the water was not, whatever's going to go over your overflow is going to go out there, and once it stops going to that overflow, then it won't go back out there, so it must have got to a point where it wasn't going over the overflow to go to the lagoon, and just went through the town then, was pumped through the town.
Okay, so, so in two rain events last year, we were at three-fourths capacity, you think, out there?
At least.
So how much more are we going to be able to kick out there? Be, so that's a, that's a challenge, because how many gallons is out there in stories right now, just roughly? How many gallons?
Four million.
Four million. So let's say that we've got it three-fourths full, and we put three million in there, we've only got room for another million gallons, in theory, to go out there. So.
Right, you're thinking like with this relief sewer?
That's correct.
Yeah, now remember that a lot of this is ending up out there anyway.
Do you have a lift station route?
It's taking the scenic route to the.
The scenic route.
Yeah, exactly.
Right.
So now we're just, we're just going to get it to dump and go before it's had the opportunity to go, to back up everybody along the way, before it can go.
Because obviously, our goal should be, during two major rain events, that, that lagoon should be completely filled to capacity.
Right.
Right, and that should be what we're trying to do.
Yup.
Utilize that asset to the best of our ability.
Yup.
And so I have concern over why that thing isn't completely filled, that, those two rain events, in, in theory, were very catastrophic rain events, and that, that thing should have been full, right? In, in your minds, don't you think that should have been full?
Yeah, yeah.
If it was designed, you know, if, if it'll fill, it should have filled in the spring or the fall of 2019, in my opinion.
Yeah, and the, the one thing I guess I, in my mind, I think is, well, that's because it was all back here in people's basements before it could get over there to get to the lagoon. If we had something like this, I, I really think, keep it out of their basements, get it to the lagoon, get it out there fast, and that, that's what I would be thinking.
Okay, in a poor man's way of doing it, if we instead of taking that 90, and we put two 45s, you know, backed off that corner by, say, 50 or 75 feet, did a 45 over and then another 50 feet on the other section back, and did another 45, that would help increase the flow just by getting rid of that 90?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I think because what's going north is only a 10-inch pipe, we're still going to have that problem.
Sure, there's a restriction, sure.
A restriction a lot on rain as well as on Park Avenue, where Fifth is trying to get into Park Avenue, and that's already running at full capacity because of the Marion, Lincoln Street area, is, they're both fighting to get into that Park Avenue, and so it's pushing it back out. So that 90, if you reduced it, would, like, in theory, would help it get around there quicker, but it's still going to try and fight to get into Park Avenue, and it's going to keep it backing up.
And, and that makes sense, I understand, that, you know, if we're trying to get that to the lagoon, the sooner we can get it to the lagoon, and the shorter it's route, it makes more sense. How about the work that was done on Park Avenue that we, we did just the one overlay, and we never went back, did a second overlay, the work right from the hospital heading over, that also was engineered by you guys at the same time, is that part of the whole lagoon overflow, or is that a separate?
That was a separate, who was it?
That was.
That was a, you mean the new sanitary sewer?
Right, right in front of your house, we're going through.
Yeah, that was a, GM ones.
Church?
No, that was the same project.
It was the same project as the lagoon? Okay, so that, how big is that pipe? That would have been installed, actually, within the past 10 years. If that was installed, same kind of lagoon was, how big a diameter is that, Rob?
15?
Yeah, I think that's 15.
Okay, well, first off, we're glad you're on the task, and, you know, if I had my way, we'd have a resident engineer to at least quarterback things, but next, best step is to have a hired gun, so we're glad you're here. I've got a couple more questions about our rain events from last year, but I'm going to save those until appropriate time, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
All righty. Anything else? I think, I think the good news is, Tim's guy is doing the flow monitoring, I think we're actually heading for real solutions finally. That's, that's good news. We've got work to do, but we are aiming for solutions.
Right, we're finishing up, you know, we're always going after grant money. We're finishing up the grant project now, where we work, you know, the city was awarded $500,000. We submitted for another one recently. We didn't get it this round, but we're going to resubmit, which is Marion Street. So, as the city can pack them, we have, we have plans together, and certainly, as our projects come to light.
And on that, on that grant program, once we get Marion done, and I'm confident we'll get that done, in, you know, in the future, after that, would be the, we're on Chestnut Street, because we did that a couple of years as well, is going door-to-door and having surveys filled out, so that would be the one that would be, that would follow Marion. You want to touch on the long-range lagoon?
If we went ahead with Thompson Street, what's the timeline to get a project like that completed?
You'd be looking at probably fall construction.
Okay.
If you were to do something fairly good with design.
Fall construction, pavement, we'll probably let that probably settle for, until the spring, we do the street pavement.
Basically, a one-year proposition, from design to permitting, bidding, construction, something like that. The other one that, that we've talked about, the mayor and Theresa, is, is one other option that we've got, back over here, our waste treatment plant is over, over here, and one of the things that's happening is, of course, this interceptor is backing up, and it's not allowing this to drain. Another possibility would be, we've got a lagoon down to the south, put another one up here to the north, and actually pump out that interceptor as the excess flows are coming to the treatment plant. And, in other words, it can only get through the treatment plant so fast. If we can catch it, go ahead and pump it into a lagoon up here, and then when the storm's over, let it run back through the plant. That's just one more place where we can be pulling down the level, or pumping it down, keeping it pumped down, giving the flows from the community a place to go during the storm, a low place to go to. And so, one of the options that, that we've looked at is actually coming out here, this is the treatment plant, and the sewers would be coming in this way into the plant, and the options would be, well, you could put in a lagoon, just like you got out south, maybe over here, obviously, you'd have to buy land, maybe down here, you'd have to buy land. Another option is, on the west end of the treatment plant, we've got this area of all this abandoned equipment from down through the years, and there's a natural ridge, of course, along here, this is all low area, and what this, this is showing you, this is the flood plain around the creek, and so in order to stay out of the flood plain, but we could build a concrete wall around like this, and actually, and do the demolition on that old junk that's down there now, and create a lagoon here, and we could put in a, a pump station down here to pump out that interceptor during the storm, store it here, and then when the storm is over, then we could pump it back or allow it to flow back into the plant. So, basically, we'd be giving ourselves a wide spot, so to speak, on the south end to go to, give ourselves a wide spot on the north end to go to. When the storm's over, then we can allow them all to flow back in. Now, this one is a more, I don't remember, something on the order of 4 million dollars. Of course, it depends on how it's designed and what it all came in. But, you know, that's, we said Thompson's like a $600,000 project, that's a little more doable. You know, this, we're probably looking at, you know, something like 4 million dollars.
Just under 3, I think.
Under 3. Yeah, just, it would, and again, it would just depend on final design, what it would take to make that happen. But, what we wanted to show you with that is just that that's sort of like, that'd be like the next step. If we could get our citizens putting in the ejector pits, if we could get Thompson draining to the south, if we had something like this to the north, you know, we're obviously way down the road of improving this whole situation for the community. And those would be sort of our immediate plans, of what direction we think we could go to, to help alleviate the whole flooding problem in the community.
How much would this hold?
About 4 million, just like your south one.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
So, and this is a long, long-range plan. It's just an idea that we're putting out there that makes sense, if it weren't for the cost.
But again, as Ray said, it's good that we're all, you know, working on this project, and you guys are committed to the city, and what our problems are, and we're learning more and more.
Yes, every day. There's part of limitations on the capacity of that, what we're using the flood plain, like Don mentioned. We wouldn't have been able to have that with the flood plain. So, that kind of holds us to the 4 million capacity on that.
Otherwise, it'd be a big one. It would hold a lot more, obviously, yeah. Any questions, comments?
If I could, so, I know, Pete, we haven't had a housing boom, but we have seen new construction, so we probably should look at taking new construction that has basements and say to them, "Hey, you're not going to be hooking up with the basement, you're going to be doing this from day one with new construction." That way, we're not fighting them down the road, because we've got some new houses, newer construction out in, let's say, Sunset Prairie, that had switched back up for the first time in that fall event, so, and those are people that unfortunately had check valves that didn't hold, so. So, that's number one. So, we can make sure new construction with basements already adheres to what you're trying to do there. The other thing is, give us just your thoughts on check valves, and what, just why they fail, and even though we've got a good quality check valve, the city's providing a check valve we think's good quality, and we've had it fail, what's your, what's your thoughts on that?
Well, my, I, I think, there's two things immediately that I think in my own head. Number one is, if I put in a check valve, not only can the flows from the sewers not back up into my basement, but neither can anything in my basement flow out. So, I'm, I, I feel like I don't, I put myself in a very difficult position. Yes, I'm rescuing my basement from backups, but now I can't use my basement either. So, I'd rather not. And beyond that, then, just the, the fact that, that check valve will only work if it seals. And, and all it's got to do is get a leaf, or a stick, or a piece of trash from the basement, and it doesn't work.
And those laterals could be infiltrating water from the check valve back to the house itself.
Or, or you could do what I did, and I have a check valve, and I pulled it out last year to clean it, and when I set it back in, I left it about two inches from the ceiling, from the, from the bottom. And so, we had that storm, and because I had about a two-inch gap, I had enough, so water got underneath. And that was on me, because I did not, you know, there's like two clicks, and I did not get it down all the way, so stupidity calls the whip of this.
That's on the record.
I think the beauty of, again, back to the ejector pits, the beauty is, you have severed that connection. That's why I'd rather see people just go ahead and go all the way, put in an ejector pit, sever that connection with the gravity.
And you can still use your, your services?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, of course, you guys can hardly see this back there, but your sum is going to continue doing its thing. I mean, we could still be flushing toilets down here, there's still one up there dropping. So, we've, we've still got use of our basement during that period of time.
And this is, again, this is a program where the city would be sharing the cost, so it's a, it's a costly project. You save $5,000 to $7,500, but it's, the city can kick in 50% up to a max, for us $3,500, I think, and, you know, it's, it's definitely worth looking into.
And everybody's a winner, because instead of you guys having to spend millions immediately to try to fix the problem, between you and the resident, you've fixed the problem, and everybody's out there.
Now, could we do away with pumping out of sanitary into storm with this? It would just take longer for the system to catch up, I guess, you know what I'm saying? Because right now, we pump to help, we need pressure.
Yeah, as long as it's not going to the residents, it takes as long as it takes to drain down.
Yeah, and, and that's back to, in a sense, we have solved the problem. I mean, if you're still having to pump to the storm sewers as a city, you're like, well, this isn't, this isn't final, but now it's more your choice how quickly you precipitate and what you do, and your poor residents don't have to know about that.
And with this overflow on the Thompson Street extension, you may not, you may not be pumping as much.
Right.
You know?
Right, yeah, yeah.
Anything else?
Obviously, the Thompson Street extension looks like a no-brainer in so many ways. I just like to make sure that, that we currently have in place the 4 million gallon capacity overflow lagoon that you guys helped engineer. We need to make sure we're using that 100% to capability on that, to make sure we already have that ammunition that we're using it. So, that's all I would just say, any tweaking we can do on that to make sure we're putting 100% of the capacity out there is critical, in my opinion, so.
Are you, any additional flow that you direct to it with projects like this that's going to help fill that capacity?
It has filled, it has filled up. That September homestead weekend rain filled it.
In '07, '07, yeah, '08.
Yeah, whatever. But, yeah, it has filled up a couple of times, but...
With that being 24-inch, I don't think we'd ever see a pump at the hospital, at Thompson and Church, seriously, I would just throw it on out.
Yeah, and in fact, I mean, back to your question, one of the thoughts that I've had is, Tim, is that we probably would have to put a valve on the other side of that, where we turn the corner, and it's heading out there, because I think, I hope, what happens is, actually, yes, we might risk overflowing the lagoon. I mean, it's all going to go out there now, there may be a point where we got to stop it, because the lagoon's full, well, good, that's where we want to get to. We want to maximize the use of whatever wide spots we can in the line to put it out there, and not in people's basements.
Is there a mechanism that tells you guys, the lagoon is full, so some valve?
Yeah, we've got it on skater system at the wastewater line.
I think it's, you know, in my opinion, this is kind of a no-brainer, we just got to move forward with something that helps solve the problem, and that's, that's critical. Because we've had people that never got to switch back up in 2019, never had it in 50 years, and they had it, so we, we had to come up with some plans here, because come spring, if we have this happening again, there'll be three commissioners or council members here that won't be here, they'll be, they'll be looking for us.
And, you know, and that's one of the things, the citizens don't see a lot of the underground work, because it's underground work, but, you know, the city, we deal with, we're engineers for 40 communities, so, you know, Princeton is certainly one of the more proactive communities. And one thing that you guys can count is that, over the last several years, you've replaced a mile of sanitary sewer, you've replaced a mile of storm sewer, and you have a combined mile designed and on the shelf ready to continue that effort, so certainly, you guys are one of the more proactive communities that we deal with.
Yeah, it's, it's a project that is, there's no quick, easy fix to it, but we have made progress the last few years, and we're going to want to continue to do that, so, thanks, guys, we appreciate you coming over. Okay, so, we'll go to approval of minutes, and we'll go to commissioner movement.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm moved that we approved the minutes from our regular council meeting on February 3rd, 2020.
I'll second that.
Motion's been seconded, any comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Mavri.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Now, we'll go to approval of invoices, the city clerk Nelson.
In the Department of Accounts and Finances, for this period, we have invoices totaling In the Department of Streets and Public Improvement, we have invoices totaling $140,880.43. In the Department of Public Safety, we have invoices totaling $171,517.21. And the Department of Public Property and Utilities, we have invoices totaling $636,371.92. Mayor, all council members present have confirmed their reviews of all invoices, and now are submitted for disposition.
I hope that we approve the invoices, Ashford Senator.
I'll second that.
Motion's been seconded, any comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Mavri.
Aye.
Newman. Mayor Clerham.
Aye. Now, we'll go to our regular business, and city clerk Nelson.
Next on the agenda is the first reading of ordinance O-20-001. This is a, an ordinance authorizing the sale of a fire department brush truck. Again, this is the first reading, all council members have had an opportunity to review this ordinance, and it is submitted for disposition.
I hope that we advance ordinance O-20-001 to the second reading.
I'll second that.
Motion's been seconded, comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Mavri.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Clerham.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is a series of three ordinances, authorizing the abatement of the 2019 tax levy, consisting of resolution R-20-006, abating a levy on Bond Series 2019-A, originally issued at $1.4 million. Also consisting of resolution R-20-008, this is for Bond Series 2019-C, originally issued at $400,000. And resolution R-20-010, Bond Series 2019-B, originally issued at $2.8 million. Mayor, all council members have reviewed these resolutions, and they have submitted for disposition.
I hope that we approve resolutions R-20-006, 008, and 010.
I'll second that.
Motion's been seconded, any comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Mavri.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Clerham.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is resolution R-20-011. This is a resolution establishing Rotary Park. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this resolution, and it is submitted for disposition.
I hope that we approve a resolution R-20-011.
I'll second that.
Motion's been seconded, any comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Mavri.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Clerham.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is, it's your turn.
Yeah. Thank you, Pete. Now, go to city manager report.
Okay, in your packet, you'll have the, there's three things in here for the police pension fund, and you have the audit adjustments is your first item, and this is for fiscal year end, April 30th, 2019. Just an adjustment of $625,879. And then you actually have two monthly financial reports, one for November, and one for December, for the police pension fund. If there's any questions on those, there's a lot of paperwork there. Next item in there is the monthly report from the city. Page one, you can see generally, as we reported the last time, revenues, expenditures are pretty much on track at this point. Actually, some of the revenues are ahead of schedule, so that's, that's good to see, expenses are on track for where we're at. If you go to page, on page four, in the street improvement fund, we just got the report on this, so I'll, I'll give an update on these numbers. As of February 20th, we now have, or we actually collected for, the last collection was $25,919, bringing that total up to $225,078. So, we're, we're ahead on that collection of that money. If you go further through, you can see the charts in there with the expense versus budget. We're, like I said, we're pretty much on track with most of this. Do you want to go to page eight? I know we discussed this last month, with the sales tax and the hotel, hotel tax. We do have a report there on... and the hotel, hotel tax, we do have a report there on January now, of what was put in, we are actually significantly up in the sales tax, so it's really good to see, you'll see that orange line there. Hotel motel is down a little bit from last year, not by much, just a little bit, so that's on page nine. The last, the couple pages, the next couple pages, 10 and 11, are actually pretty good to look at here. The cash and investments, you can see all the cash and investments listed there for the city, it's good to keep an eye on those. The next page are your investment maturities, that's also another good one to keep an eye on, if there's any questions on those. The electric one, the second one listed there at first date was one we just ruled over, so... And, on page 12, debt repayment progress, you'll see there's no, we didn't have any payments or anything that came to you in January, so you're not seeing any changes there for the beginning and the end of the month balance there. And the last page in here is your police and fire activity sheet, so you can see the activity for police and fire in there as well. Any questions?
Theresa, page 13, is it, am I reading this accurately, that our debt is about, is down to $26,869, is that the right number I'm looking at? Page 13.
At the end of the month, that you're looking at the principal there.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. It started at 40 when I started.
Yeah.
We're doing well.
Any other questions, comments? I just have a couple things under mayor comments, Voices of the Prairie at the President's Public Library, is inviting citizens of all ages and interest to participate in the Constitution and why it matters, this is a series of free public presentations and discussions, it'll be starting tomorrow night, 6:30 PM at the library, also on February 26th, 6:30 at the library, and then the first two Thursdays of March, March 5th and March 12th, also at 6:30 PM. And also, Paul Philippi, he was a, passed away at the age of 99, he was a Princeton police officer, I think, for 15 years, something like that, I believe it was 15 years, he's been retired a, a long time ago, but, from our condolences to the family. Any new business? Oh, never mind, hold on a second, old business, Pete?
Under old business, I have resolution R-20-009-A. This is a resolution clarifying and revising the contract signatures authorized by resolution R-20-009 on January 20th. The contracts that we have in, in the house here behind us is, has the mayor and the city clerk testing the mayor's signature on those contracts, whereas in January, the council is actually authorizing the city manager to do that, so, rather than, just to simplify things, we're just passing a resolution to give the authority back to the mayor for this one time only.
I hope that we approve resolution R-20-009-A.
I'll second that.
Motion's been seconded, comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Mavri.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem. Aye. Any other old business? Do we have any new business? Do we have any public comment? Okay, entertain, motion to adjourn and recompete.
I hope that we adjourn our regular meeting this evening, and come together again for our next meeting on Monday, March 2nd, 2020, 7 o'clock at City Hall.
I'll second that.
Motion has been seconded, call roll.
Councilmember Mavri.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye. This meeting's adjourned, thank you all for coming.